The front row is completely blank up here, so come up to sit over the front row if you would. There you go. We've got all kinds of conflicts tonight and not good weather this week. Well, it looks like we've got 22, 23 folks here, so can you not hear me?
Not too good.
Okay. Jack's been out shooting.
That's better, that's better.
Jack's been shooting again, still has the earplugs in.
That's how I lost it.
Okay. But anyway, what we're gonna do this evening is, as you can see, we have a lot of folks here that are hosting this meeting, and hopefully a lot of them will show up later. But we have one distinguished group here tonight called the Watchmen. It's probably the largest of all of our groups. And since their chairman is here, we're gonna just talk him into emceeing. Welcome Pastor Doug Jones.
This is gonna make the emcee, because we're about to end on his day. Uh, we had, uh...
Mike?
...a smaller than I am, I'd be able to question him.
I think you're... I don't think it's on.
What's on?
Test. I gotta swallow this thing, so... I'm a pastor, I'll be able to preach loud enough, but how's that? Can you hear me better today? Well, we blended into his day. I didn't intend to push him aside and stretch his imagination, but we had talked about after legislative session, it would be a good idea to have all our groups together and just talk to our legislators and lawmakers and just first of all tell them how grateful we are for what they did. Uh, we'll do that in a minute. Then we'll also be able to talk about some other issues as well. Uh, I understand we start with the pledge for the Garland County Government Group, so let's go ahead and do that. We'll start with the pledge, and then we'll have a word of prayer, and then if you sit down, we'll get started, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. Father, we thank you for the privilege of letting in a great and free nation. Lord, I know that there's a lot of folks that were trying to take this nation down, and a lot are trying. But Father, you have left a remnant here that has fought and fought and fought to protect our rights and freedoms. And Father, we thank you for the tenacity of that group. We thank you, Lord, for the steadfastness of that group. And Lord, I pray that you'll just help us to endeavor to always do your will. As we endeavor to do your will, we know that we'll be the best servant we can be for our nation as well. And Lord, I pray right now that everything that we talk about tonight will be done in a civil manner, number one, and Father, that we'll do it in a manner that will give you honor and glory. Now, Father, once again, just watch over this meeting in a special way in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you. I already started out by saying we've had a great legislative session. I feel like that God was honored and that we had a lot of good, excellent laws come out of this, but it wouldn't have happened without great lawmakers. And that's a testament to you and the effort that you put forth in trying to get good people in office. As I started looking at this legislative session, I was excited before they even got to Little Rock, because I felt like we have a friend now in Little Rock where before we didn't. I can remember walking the halls and walking with Jerry Cox and just feeling like we didn't have a friend won from the governor all the way on down. And now, it's not uncommon when you walk in there, you meet people like Briscoe Zart or Lori Rushing or, you know, Mickey Gates, and they're there, and they say, "Hey, how you doing?" And it was kinda nice, like, "What are you, you know, how are you doing?" rather than "What are you doing?" And we've enjoyed this session. A lot of good things have happened. And I just wanna take a minute, first of all, and I would like to thank them all, but Bruce, you're gonna get the run of it, and then if you feel up to passing that on down to the rest of them, you go ahead and do that. But I want to thank you personally for your willingness to serve. I know that it's not easy to be up there, where you're taking a lot of flack sometimes for the standers that you take, especially as a Christian. I know that there's a lot of long, hard hours that you spend, if not in Little Rock, then on the road back and forth to Little Rock. And it's a sacrifice for your family as well, and it's a testament to you and to your family to do that which I believe God's called you to do in being a representative for us. We wanna give you a chance, Bruce, to go ahead and share a little bit. Now, you're a freshman, so you're a junior.
I'm right in the middle, right there.
Right in the middle. I started putting together with schools, and I thought you were there last year.
The new term's a Bruce freshman.
But anyway, we wanna give you five minutes or so. Well, if nobody shows up... You talk as though you're here, huh? Share some little bit, and let's welcome Bruce.
I'll try to make this work. I'll just try to be loud enough that you can probably hear me. I've got kind of a deep voice, so... You know, thank you for having me tonight. You know, I'm sure the others will show up in a minute. There were a couple of things going on other than this tonight. But I, you know, I told Dr. Jack, I said, "You know, I thought you guys were important. Y'all are my voters, my people that support me, that pray for me, that help us get through the average day over there." The Chamber deal, you know, we work for them to do, help them do things also, but, you know, they're not people that vote for us, and they're not people that are right behind us and standing back their back and stuff. So I figured you were the most important tonight, so I'm here. And I'm sure the others believe that too, but they probably were obligated already before or something, so... But anyway, it's good to be here, you know, and I do covet your prayer. I told everybody a while ago, I said, "You know, if it wasn't for y'all praying for me, I don't know how anybody could make it up there." And you can see the frustration on some of the legislators' lives and their faces day to day when they do not know Jesus and having it in their heart. And you can really tell that, and so I'm blessed. I was raised in a Christian home. My dad was a minister for 50 years, so I came up. Won't say I was always in the right place. You know, and try to stay there. We still make mistakes, believe me, but, you know, I love that background that I had, and I thank the good Lord for it every day, that I had a family that brought me up in Christianity, had taught me about Jesus, had taught me about love, had taught me about being kind to people and how to treat people. My dad was probably one of the most kindest guys I ever knew, and I didn't get all of that. I can be mean. I try not to. But I did show my temper a couple of times in Little Rock and over probably just cause, but sometimes you're not supposed to do that, and I try not to. Legislation this year, I think most of y'all may know that I was the chairman of the House Education Committee, which was a very big honor to me that I was chosen to be over that committee. That committee is one of the powerful ones, that and Public Health are the two most powerful committees down there. You might say something about our budget is, but, you know, budget takes care of all the money, but that money has to flow through some other committees too. So, but it was a very big honor to do that. I had a lot of people tell me I did a great job. I, you know, I don't know, I just think it might've been wanting something from me, so... But we had probably over 400 and something bills go through that committee, and it was a very big job. So if somebody asked me tonight about a bill that didn't go through my committee, I may not know anything about it, 'cause I focused a lot on education. Eight out of the 10 bills that I ran personally that I filed were education bills. I did file one for game and fish and one for, oh, I don't remember what it is now, for something else. But, and I co-sponsored a lot of education bills. I was telling Doug that Alan Clark and I collaborated on a bunch of bills. We worked together to get a lot of stuff too. So altogether, I couldn't even tell you, I had 73 different bills that I worked on with other people. So it's a busy time for all the legislators over there. We had less bills, 260 something bills less filed this year than we had the last session. So that was, that's an accomplishment. We are bringing government in. You know, that's, that's, that's good. Oh, you're talking about growing government. When you're not having that many bills, you're not growing. We cut a lot of taxes, Governor, $100 million worth of tax cuts. The middle income tax cut. There's a lot of things that are happening that's good over there. We've had some setbacks, but we've had a lot of encouraging things. Just this morning, I had been in Little Rock last night, decided we'd have a prayer breakfast at the Governor's Mansion this morning. And I am honored, every Wednesday during legislative session, we have a prayer caucus. And I did not miss one meeting. I'm proud of myself. I did not miss a Wednesday morning. We had, most of us did not. There was a few that did, but we have a special group that come together. Senators, representatives, and a couple of gentlemen that are laymen in the community that have started this years ago and keep putting it on. And then we actually were blessed this year with about three lobbyists. We've never had lobbyists join that group, and we had three lobbyists come and join us. And it was, it was amazing, the spirit that God had at those meetings. I mean, we sat there and cried and prayed for each other. One of the gentlemen was having some cancer, and they were going, he was going through treatments, and he came in and he was just, you know, he was just broken. He was so blessed by what God was doing in his life and how he was getting healed. And, you know, you don't think about us talking about that at the Capitol, but that's what we did on Wednesday morning. And it was just, I was honored to be there. And then of course today, like I said, we have a prayer breakfast at the end of the session. We had that today, and if you've ever been to Governor's Mansion down in that hall in there, every table was packed all the way back to the stairs. Not the stairs you go up the big ones, but the ones that you go up in the backside, and tables up on the top level. We've never had that. Never, at the end of four years that I've been there, every year we have one, we've never had that many people. It just tells you, we got a governor that loves God, a lot different than the last one we had. That is, that is a blessing in itself to have a governor that will pray with you and let you pray for him. And, you know, I'm not talking much about legislation. I'm just talking about the blessings we received while we were there. And it was a blessing, like I said. Your prayers for us over there, we do need it, so... It was a shorter session than we've had in about two weeks that have passed, so we actually got out of there a little quicker, got things done. We didn't fight a lot this year. You know, as y'all know, we fought a lot over the private option before. That came out real early, and, you know, I won't say the private option did what we wanted it to do, but it's got a chance of, I mean, it has a chance of it, and I don't think that... You know, I just don't think it'll ever completely go away, but it's not gonna be here like it was. I think we've got a chance to do something with it now, what we did before. Revenue stabilization at the very end, it went real smooth. Well, before, a lot of people fought over that, but we brought it, we brought it down. We didn't have growth less than we've had in the past, so that was another good... I don't remember the whole amount, but it was quite a bit. Education takes a lot of that money. I ran the largest amount of money bill that there is for the schools, foundation funding was $3.2 billion. Was one of the bills that I ran. And that's the day I got mad. I had to amend something out of it. I tried to put some $3 million of supplemental transportation funding in there. Our schools had a lot of trouble with transportation, didn't get enough funding to make them work. And so I had to talk with some people. We had decided on our adequacy committee last year to put $3 million in there. So we put it in there, but former Governor BP threw it out. And so we tried to put it in anyway. And I fought it all the way through until I got to the Senate, and then the Commissioner of Schools and the Governor's staff said, "We gotta take it out. We don't have the budget." So I took it out, so that was an amendment on the Senate end. So when you do that, when you amend something on the Senate end, and it's a temporary change to the House, you gotta run it back through and follow those amendments. So I got it back through my committee with a little bit of resistance from one gentleman. So when I brought it to the House floor, I got resistance from him again. And everybody thought that if we didn't pass that amendment, that we could keep that $3 million and everything was good. And so they failed the bill. And it didn't go well for me. And I just knew that was the funding for the schools. And if you don't pass that bill, it reverts back to the 15th school year, which was, just for instance, one school spring bill, a Fayetteville area, Springdale School System was gonna lose $1.2 million on that failed bill. And so I just got mad, and I put my hands up, and I said, "There goes your school funding." I mean, I yelled it across the whole thing. So I was pretty mad at it, walked out. And one, I mean, I had people chasing me out. "What's going on? What happened?" And I said, "That's your school funding. You've got to have that." And so we came back in. The guy that spoke against it was a very good friend of mine. He kind of apologized to me. He said, "Man, I didn't know that was gonna make you so mad." I said, "It's not that it made me mad." I said, "How are you gonna fund your schools?" I said, "You gotta have every superintendent that has a, they've called them reps, and it already started." And superintendents that started calling, 'cause they were watching it on TV, and they started calling, saying, "Y'all can't do that." So we got that back on and reconsidered the vote and revoked it and passed it almost unanimously. Figured out what they've done, so... Things like that happen. We had a lot of reconsiderations this year on bills, but that was the only one I had to do. And so, you know, and sometimes you may have to show a little temper to get your way. But I wasn't mean. I didn't say anything. I told them, I said, "You'll never make me drink. You'll never make me smoke, and you'll never hear me say a bad word." Now, you may seem to get angry and red-faced, and one guy, Kent Hammer, and I know y'all know Kent Hammer, he said, "Take your blood pressure medicine." And I said, "I don't take that medicine." But we did have a good time, and, you know, I hope that we accomplished goals that you were set out. I know we didn't get everything, but I hope we did good enough in your eyes that you're happy with us. We had a good team. You talk about our team. We had a good team. Mickey and Lori, Lori came in and had a little better seniority than Mickey. And Mickey got pretty bottom, so he didn't get in a lot of the committees he wanted. Lori got pretty lucky, got on a couple of committees, but she found favor with some of the seniors, the speaker and stuff, so she got to do, of course, she got elected chair, I'm sorry, freshman caucus leader. Now, that's a pretty good deal. She was elected freshman caucus leader, so she's, she'll probably tell you these things, but she stepped up and she took care of that caucus and did a good job. Mickey came up and done a great job and ran. I don't think he was successful in everything as I was either. And we had ups and downs, but, you know, they all stepped up, and they done a great job. They fought hard for water issues and things with the city-counting things that we had on. And Alan, you know, I don't have any bills I've got working on. He is a workhorse. You know, I almost sat here and bragged on those guys. They all did a great job. Richard Womack, we fought Richard on a couple of bills that he ran, because he was looking at things a little different we are. But other than that, he fought with us on the things at Garland County. He only has a little piece of it, but he did a great job with us. He's coming along. He's moving up. All of us, Richard and I are both in our second term, really. I'm really in my third, and my first one didn't count against me, so I'm in my second term. Lori and Mickey in their first, and Alan's in his first too. So Alan will be running again in two years for Senate again. And your other senator up north, Bill Sample, he's got the full four years coming up, so I'm not sure what his plans are after that, so... You know, I'm just mentioning people in Garland County. But anyway, it's been good, you know? I'd be glad to answer any questions y'all have if you want me to. I about talked that out. I know there's no waiting on people. Go ahead. I see your hand up.
Well, Bruce, I'm curious about one of the bills. I don't know the number of it. I haven't read it. I've just heard it reported on, and I'm not against doing that. I intend to do that, but I just haven't done it yet. I wonder if it went through your committee, and it was the bill that, that gave DHS an additional new authority to... And some people feel like...
And go with your mind. It works for Public Health. Everything with DHS goes for Public Health.
Well, it was education-related.
And they just about everything goes.
Okay, and it had no opposition any, from Senate or House apparently, reportedly. I was curious if it was a standalone bill or was it buried down in the language of some larger bill that addressed something else? But do you know what the bill is I'm referring to?
No, and tell me what it did.
It gave DHS a brand-new authority if somebody calls in an anonymous complaint that a homeschooler is not educating their children to suit whoever called it up.
605 or 610. That, that, that did not go through my committee, but I helped him with that. That, that bill is a good bill. It's a teacher, it's a teacher bill.
Who asked for that bill? Where did that come, request for that bill come from?
One of your Supreme Court judges.
DHS did not request that new authority?
No, that came from the circuit, the judges, child judges. What it is, they, we have so many kids, I'll try to explain it.
Well, could you say the name of it?
I talked for that bill on the floor.
You sponsored it?
We have so many kids that come to school. Our dog comes to school, they're truant. They have problems. They won't, they don't come to school two or three times. And a teacher cannot call DHS and turn people in. That's just, they can't do it. But they would come to, they might come to school with sores all over them, that no way of taking care of them. They're infected. They've got head lice really bad. They continue to have those problems. But most of all, the biggest issue they were having is girls that were 13, 14 years old, was their mothers or their dads were on drugs so bad, they were pimping their kids out to get money for, to get them on drugs. And so the teachers, the teachers know more about those kids than anybody, but they could not make that call. It was not legal for them to make the call of DHS to say, "There's a problem here. Y'all need to check it out."
But you're not talking about public school students, are you? You're talking about homeschools?
No, it's nothing to do with homeschools. Has nothing to do with homeschools. Somebody could do that now. Knock it off. Homeschools, they're not, you have no teachers at homeschools, so they would not be there. It's public schools.
Okay, I guess I need to read the bill.
The bill, the bill was not aimed, and that was one of the reasons...
I've heard it reported as a new authority to go into homeschools.
No.
And...
If your neighbor, if your homeschooler, your child, your neighbor can call you in and they can come into your house.
Yeah, but not for reasons of education?
No, it's not about education. It was about...
You know, if you're teaching your kids that God created the universe instead of it being a meaningless accident or such?
It was not about education reasons other than truancy, truancy issues, but it was more about health issues and the way the kids were, I mean, you know, if they were being untreated of any way.
Okay, what's that bill number then?
It's either, it's either SB 610 or 605, but I can't remember exactly.
Okay.
Been a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
But it's over there. That's what that was about, but... But a homeschooler, that's what the big worry was. People were saying, "Oh, you're just gonna let DHS come in and take our homeschoolers away from us." Well, no, they can do that anyway, so if you're, like I said, if a, if a neighbor says there's an issue and they keep complaining about it, they'll come check that out. But this is only for private, I mean, public school teachers could make that recommendation to them if there's an issue. Yes, sir?
I saw a paper last week, I think it was, that I think $60 million was moved to education.
For funding, for facility funding.
Facility funding, okay. Hot Springs wants to put up a couple of extra mills for it. Would some of that money go...
Now, the millage money is what you would pay locally for those. That, that money is for projects that are already been approved for the future. You know, when you, when you approve a school project or they put in for a school project, they go to a committee. Yeah. Well, it goes before a committee over there, and that committee approves those. And once it's approved, it doesn't mean you get the money right then, but it, it has been a partnership money. That partnership money pretty well went away last year. And that was all those projects that were already on that partnership money. We just didn't have enough to take care of it. You'll still get some money, or you can borrow money from the, from the state to build buildings, but most of that bill is, the two, two bills that Hot Springs wants probably is for building some things. Are y'all, I mean, I don't know how many. They've called me and wanted me to work with them and help them for that. And I will tell you, I'm always hesitant about millage issues because I know how much people ain't taxes. And I told them, I said, "I will be glad to say what you probably need is good. I will get out there and tell my people to vote for it. I'm not gonna tell you to vote for it." And that is up to each one who lives in that district.
Why do we need to end the time tax when a bond issue would happen?
I don't know. That's what they have to discuss and talk about. Right now, Hot Springs, I don't know sure if they're gonna move on with that or not. They're looking for a new superintendent, and they've got 27 applicants for that. So I think that the new superintendent will come in, and I'm sure that will happen after that. I doubt if they would move on with something before they get a new superintendent in there, but they might.
Elections, truly?
It's for the village.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know whether they're gonna build that quick. That's why I said, I don't know if they'll build something that quick. But yeah, the village election, that probably won't, but she's staying in October, but I think her contract's up in July.
What about Concorde, wherever we are?
Concorde, all right. Well, let's talk about Concorde a little bit.
Do you want to make committee since you're on the education, that you want the Governor's...
I'm not on the task force, no. That is all made up of teachers, principals. I don't think you're, there may be a superintendent on it. There's one student from UALR on there, but it's mostly teachers and principals from across the state. And that's the people that, that know about it and deal with it, so... I don't know if there's just a layperson that's not a teacher on there. I don't think I remember. There's one.
She works for Jared Cox.
Okay.
Sheree.
Okay, there's one, okay, good. I was thinking there might be one, but I didn't know if there were. I know there's not lots.
I heard they were all saying...
That, that is gonna, they're gonna go around and, and they're gonna have meetings, and then they're gonna take input from different areas. And I know Channel 7 or Channel 4 had a town hall, something yesterday.
Monday night.
Or Monday night, yeah. And I don't know what happened on that. I was working and I didn't get to see it, so... But Concorde is a very interesting little land. We have people that love it and many people that hate it. And, but you gotta understand it. I have teachers that just love it, and I have some teachers that just don't like it at all.
I heard the Teacher of the Year in Ohio was receiving her award for being the best teacher in Ohio, and announced that she was quitting teaching because of Concorde.
Let me go and get your question. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Finish his up first.
Well, basically, what I was gonna say about that, the more I see the, and I don't mean this demeaning, but the teachers that have been there longer, the older teachers, do not like change. They're, they're, it is a change. It's a totally different way of teaching. And the younger teachers that are more adaptable to the change, because they're seeing change, and they don't have as much problem with it. And so that's, that's one of the things you, it's important to talk to, and it's important what they teach. Whether they teach math or English or, or science or what, you know?
Look at the math and know it's no good.
Well, I will disagree with you on that. I'm not pro-Concorde, but I will say it's, it's challenging.
Why should it be challenging?
Raise your sound profile.
Why does it have to be challenging?
It's, it's challenging. Now, don't get mad at me. I'm just saying what I would say. It's challenging, and it's challenging in its own way, and all of it. The one thing that I don't like about Concorde in the history part, we have taken a lot of the history out. Now, we just ran a bill with, let me call Smith, got a bill through my committee on the very last day before session ended. We got a call this year that will put history back in, back before the revolution era.
Did that last?
Yes, it did. We got it all the way back. So that, that will put it back in. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, well, the question and a comment. The question is, whatever this committee comes up with, will that be a recommendation or will that be instituted, or how, how is that?
It's already in, so Concorde's here. So if the, if the committee says that they recommend that it stays, it will stay. If they recommend it goes away, then we'll address that and see what we have to do. Commissioner Johnny King is the new Commissioner of Education for the State of Arkansas, and so Johnny will be, have to deal with whatever that, whatever they come up with. And Johnny's part of that team that's working on that.
And my comment is, as a Republican or Libertarian or whatever, I dislike the idea of the federal government telling all these schools what to do when the local people should have more control over it than what they've been given. I just think, don't think that's a Republican principle.
Well, your local control basically is who you elected to do that. And this was something that happened way before I got there. Concorde started years ago, and you break her old neck, 'cause I already let her have it. I'm gonna finish my questions and then I'll let you have it. But Concorde started quite a while back in the lower grades and worked its way up. Now, my first year there was when it, when it went to the high school levels. And so I think there'll be a major, I think the governor's gonna do his duty, and the lieutenant governor will do their duty in searching out what everybody feels all the way across the state. There've been quite a few states that's pulled out. There's still states that are pulling out, and there's still some states that are hanging in. So I want what's best for Arkansas. I don't want us to pull out and cost us billions or millions of dollars because if you have to do it at the right time, you're gonna do it without losing all the money. Because we're already obligated. It's not about the money, but I don't wanna, I wanna do it, it's just like the parks testing. If we pulled out the parks testing before the end of the year, it was $206 million that would've cost the state of Arkansas. And that was, that was unneeded because of testing.
How do we convey grief for this pleasure to you guys where you get it?
Yeah, yeah. She shall.
Don't call me on the phone. Elizabeth, Elizabeth, don't call me on the phone.
No, I will.
I know. She doesn't have internet, so... Internet is the best tool.
I don't like internet.
How do we get you to understand where it's not... Well, I understand your displeased, but we're gonna do it anyway.
Yeah.
Well, I mean...
And what I hear is the people...
Well, let me, let me just, let me just tell you something. Listen to me. How many's in this room? Let's say there's 50. There's 50 in here. in this room? Let's say there's fifty. There's fifty in here. I have thirty thousand that I represent. So just because you didn't get it, doesn't mean that it was, you were the only one or not. But I mean, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's, I have to look at everybody, good, bad, and the ugly. And, uh, so I mean, I, I can't always say that I can do everything you want because I have to look at the biggest plea. And, and what is best for all of them, not just a small special interest group, any here, there, or anywhere. But the best way to get ahold of us is through emails. We do not have time. The nurses this year flooded us with calls. We got call after call, and we couldn't answer all the calls. And, and you, it's better to email 'cause that time, where we're sitting down, you can flip through the emails, you can read them real quick, you can respond to them at night, you can do things like that. I don't respond to all of them. I take it to heart. I look at them. I see what the main call is, and I listen to that. And, uh, so thanks, thanks for listening. Listen, I, I, I took enough time. I know everybody else is gonna thank you.
We're gonna stay here. We'll field some more questions in a minute. We want to give Lori a chance to talk. Uh, I do have emails, phone numbers, cell phones. I've got anything there is to know to get ahold of people on this piece of paper, even what committees are on. Uh, so we'll make that available to you, and, and you can have it. Uh, I would just say, some of the information I've received is, put a good subject line up there, just real short on an email, the subject line, and, and they read that, and they catch the line, and they go to it. I'm speaking. Okay. Uh, and then keep it short, you know, just as short as possible, just the facts, man, just the facts.
That, and we get a lot of people that call, and they'll bring us a note to call you back. We're in session. We usually will get those. So you're not gonna get a call back. You might get it later. And, and most of, we just don't, we really don't have time to make all those calls. I'm just gonna tell you, we are loaded over. We're there. We're loaded over with work. And if I return every call I got, I'd never be thinking that I'm gonna be.
And it's like a preacher.
I live in your district, and I live at this address, works for them too.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's, it's all the ones that are outside the district that.
We get all kinds of emails that say, I'm your constituent.
Yeah.
Flathead Arkansas. Well, that gets a call.
And it's kinda like a preacher. You give him a message five minutes before he gets in the pulpit, it's gone. I don't remember what's on stuff. It's a great, have Lori hearing, and, uh, I tell you, I understand you didn't get my email. I'm sorry about that. But, uh, I'm glad you checked on me.
Well, he's probably right, but there's some of them, even the lady in the house in the back office, I don't get her emails either.
Oh, I guess. We want to give Lori a chance to talk about, uh, her first legislative session, some of the, the good parts, the bad parts, the victories and the feats, and then, uh, we'll make some more questions for Lori in just a minute. Tell them what committees that you were on, and, uh, and then go.
Well, it's, uh, I'm glad to be here tonight, and I'm glad Dr. Jack stayed on me and said it's tonight, Lori, be there. And I'm, I'm jelly-clipped, but I'm supposed to be somewhere else. He's like, I don't care. Dr. Jack said be here. So, so we're here. So, he's just a bulldog. But that's a good thing. So, uh, but it is a pleasure to be here. Um, this is, this was my first term. I was, uh, honored to be elected the freshman caucus chair, which is a bipartisan position. Uh, we had forty-one freshmen this year that came in. So we learned early on that, uh, we could kinda maneuver some votes if we needed to, if we all stuck together. I think Bruce even saw that, that we, we did, we stuck together most, most of the session. There, of course, were there some issues that we were divided on, but for the majority of the session, we stood together as a team. Uh, one thing that we did do as a freshman group, as a, as a Republican freshman group, we made a pact that even if we're, if somebody's running some sort of legislation that, uh, we don't totally agree with, that we wouldn't go, you know, just try to backstab them in the back, you know, and get everybody against them, that we would try to, even if we're not gonna vote for them, we'll tell them we're not gonna vote for them. And, uh, we'll tell them why we're not voting, and why we feel like we don't need to vote that way. And then they could, everybody can make their own choices. And so we did that. But, uh, I also sit on the House Rules Committee. Uh, I'm on the Judiciary Committee, and I've probably heard of Judiciary Committee because of the RFRA. So that's where it came through. Um, also sit on, um, Aging, Children, and Youth Military Legislative Affairs. And so, uh, that's one big group. I think that's where everything goes, that they don't know to put anywhere, where it needs to go, so they just stick it there for us to decide what to do with it. Um, and so I'm just trying to think. Bruce, am I, wasn't he committed? Uh, yes, I was, uh, appointed to the, thanks to Representative Cozart here. I was, uh, selected to sit on the Teacher Insurance Task Force. I think he just wanted somebody to go through the punishment with him. So, that's what I really think. And so he decided, let's just pick on the freshmen and put Lori up there. So, uh, that's where, that's where we were. We had, uh, a lot of good legislation go through this year. Uh, we had some good leadership. We had some disagreements. We had some, some battles that we didn't want to, they didn't go quite the way we wanted them to go. Uh, but ultimately, I think the end result is gonna, gonna be in favor of where most of us wanted to go. We've had some, we had some battles that we lost. We had some battles that we won. Uh, one of the first issues that was put on our plate was, of course, the governor's tax, uh, middle income tax decrease, which we were all very much for. Uh, but by the time it got to the House, I'm not sure why Senator Clark let it out over there, but it was in the Senate side. But, but I kinda plus that email at first. I said, why'd you let this out? Because it dawned on me, it's like, why do we need seventy-five votes on this? Because if we need seventy-five votes, so it means we must be having a tax increase somewhere. Because for a tax decrease, you don't need seventy-five votes. And so we got looking at it, and there was the capital gains cut that kind of, uh, rolled it back to thirty percent instead of the fifty percent that had been put in place by the, the previous session. And so we tried, and we worked with the governor really hard to get that brought back. Uh, we put our trust in the governor, and he came through. Uh, we, as freshmen, I said, I don't know if it's because we were dumb and didn't know any better, but we just thought we could just march into the governor's office the second week and say, we don't like your tax cuts. And so, and so we did. And so, but that, that being said, uh, we were able to get, he told us if we would just work with him, that he would try to get those tax cuts put back in for us, uh, with the capital gains. And he did. He left, he honored his word, and he worked with us really hard to get those, that capital gains cut back. It's not in the increment that maybe we would like it, but it will all be back in there by twenty seventeen, by the first of twenty seventeen, we'll have it all back. So we'll go back to forty-five percent immediately, and then by, by the first of twenty seventeen, we'll have the full fifty percent back in. So, um, like I said, I think that was maybe when the freshmen realized, hey, we, we might be able to make a difference over here. Yeah, we have a voice. We have a bigger, bigger one than we thought. But, uh, and I know that, uh, Dr. Jack and some of them had asked me previously on the RFRA that just went through, and I know that's a big issue. And I did sit on Judiciary. I did run a lot of my campaign based on the RFRA. And so that's been, um, House Bill twelve-twenty-eight in case. And you wanna know what I'm talking about? It's the Religious Freedom Restoration Act. And I know you've all heard in the media and the news of House Bill twelve-twenty-eight, and it was replaced by Senate Bill nine-seventy-five. And basically, the difference in these two is just some language and case language. I mean, I talked to Representative Ballinger again today, and he said, he said, listen, listen, Representative Rushing, he said, we have a RFRA in place now. We have a Religious Freedom Restoration Act in place that we did not have when we started this session. And we have some, we have accomplished something that they were, they thought they were gonna be able to defeat us with. But instead, we came to a compromise and said, you know what? We're gonna take out some of this language that you really don't like, that really doesn't really mean much, because really, the purpose of the RFRA is still the same. And so, uh, I know that that's been kind of, there's been some contention on why did the governor say he wouldn't sign it? He would sign it, and then he wouldn't sign it, and then he sends it back. And, and you know, I think that the, the governor, there was a lot of distractions going on at the Capitol. Uh, and, and honestly, I have to say that there was a lot of us representatives, and Bruce will probably feel this way as well, on the House side. We took a lot of punishment over there on that side with that, uh, with that bill. I have a very good friend that was representative. She got spit on when she was living in the Judiciary Committee because of it. We were being yelled at and booed at when we walked up the Capitol steps. And so we took a lot of heat and a lot of pressure over that particular, that particular bill. But we knew it was the right thing to do. The governor knew it was the right thing to do. And so, uh, I think that, uh, just trying to take the attention off of what was happening over here with twelve-twenty-eight and pushing nine-seventy-five through got us where we needed to be. Because the attention, if you notice, stayed on twelve-twenty-eight the whole entire time. They never really refocused over here on nine-seventy-five, which is what we got through. And so it was kinda like a, I, I think somebody yesterday at where I taught, they said, well, it's like a game of bait and switch. And I said, yeah, exactly. So, you know, we kept the focus over here at twelve-twenty-eight while we were working over here on nine-seventy-five to get what we needed to go through. And, and that was an objective that I know that Representative Ballinger went in this session with. It was also one of my main goals, was to get a RFRA passed. And so I was very proud of that accomplishment, because like I said, that was one of the main focuses I ran my campaign on. So, and I'll be open for questions. I heard y'all talking about Common Core with, with Bruce, and I, I'm, he knows better. He was Chair of Education. He knows. But I don't know if he mentioned, and maybe he did, with the governor's town halls that are coming. I know that there will be one in Mouton. Have you talked to him about one being here? There is one that'll be here. Yeah, I think there will be one here in Hot Springs, and there will also be one in Mouton, too, as well. So. Okay. And so that town, the, the governor is gonna be, he's gonna be down doing them from what I understand. He's gonna be coming to, uh, the cities. And it's gonna be more of a, the way he explained it to me, it was gonna be more of a listening thing. He wants to listen to what everybody has to say. So, uh, is that the way you understood it as well?
I'm not sure if it's the governor coming, or is it the governor?
Well, he, the governor's office told me it was the governor coming. But, but I will.
I, I hope he does.
That's what, that's what, uh, Michael Lammerow told me, that it was the governor coming. So, and, and they may both be here. So.
Hold on, questions?
Okay.
Yeah. I'm gonna hold Alan to ten minutes. All right? We can do that. And then we'll go ahead and open up for discussion. There are several bills. I've got several over here, uh, that I'll look at as well. Uh, and just let everybody have a say on this. Now, why, they, they really came up with, uh, unified body. Garland County voted together on just about everything. Uh, but there are a couple where they did it on. So, uh, if there's some questions in there, we'll, we'll kinda get those questions asked. Alan, you got nine minutes, no, ten minutes.
Hello, how are you doing?
Good.
I'm just gonna take off running. Uh, you, most of you probably realize I represent four counties, uh, southern, eastern, western, Garland County, all of Hot Spring County, western Grant, southwestern Slane. Uh, I served on education, uh, budget, legislative council, uh, children, youth, and aging. I am the first alternate on legislative audit on the Senate side. I am vice chair of agriculture, economic development, and I am the chair of joint performance review. Uh, and did I mention Senate Chair of Education Caucus? It was great serving with this delegation. Uh, it was a great team. Uh, I, my passion's education. Representative Cozart being the chair of, uh, education on the House side. Uh, we worked, uh, several bills that either he sponsored and I carried on the Senate side, or vice versa, important bills, uh, working together, uh, on the, the water issue. I received most of the publicity, but they were all involved, uh, at least all those with R by their name were, were involved. Uh, and, uh, Lori, Representative Rushing very much so on the, the House side, uh, but so was Representative Cozart and Representative Gates and Senator Sankton. Uh, they all had bills or threatening bills or, or something to take some of the heat off of me and, uh, uh, have the focus, energy at other places. SB seven-sixty-two, uh, y'all, uh, again, you didn't give me very much time, so you know about the water bill. Uh, SJR six, uh, was a, uh, amendment that I filed, uh, that allowed us to use lottery scholarships for career training. Uh, that did not become one of the three. Also had another one, I don't remember which number, uh, it's probably in my notes here somewhere, uh, that would've changed term limits somewhat, reduced them back down to, uh, five terms in the House and three in the Senate. Uh, four-oh-four, uh, didn't know they would get any publicity, but it was on the, uh, in the Democrat Gazette Today. Put six hundred thousand dollars a year back into lottery scholarships. That was being used for other things. That was kind of, uh, thank you. That was a very quiet one, uh, that I was at the end saying, folks, we have to do this. We, uh, this is money we've, uh, been told that we can have, so let's put it back. Uh, and again, and that was one of several bills that constituents brought to me. Uh, this constituent asked to be anonymous, uh, but a constituent brought it to me, and we wrote it and filed it. And, uh, and so there's a constituent in Garland County, uh, who's, uh, they had my help, but there was, I'd have never known that it could've been done, or where the money should've, where we were overspending to put six, six million dollars in the next ten years back into scholarships. Uh, five-sixty, uh, I did not get done again, but I, I'm sure working with the governor and with, uh, Senate Chair, uh, revenue tax check boss will get it done next time. Would appreciate your help in, uh, getting charitable giving, uh, to not be taxed. Uh, right now, if a retail business gives you merchandise, they have to pay sales tax on it. Uh, if they give it to, uh, the fire department, to the school, to church, you name it, uh, it's crazy. Uh, and, uh, I worked over for two sessions now. I believe the third time will be a charm. Uh, big bill, uh, school choice, SB one-seventy-nine. I was a sponsor, Representative Cozart was the House sponsor. Other than Garland County and about two other schools, uh, you, uh, are no longer tracked by your zip code. You can go to school anywhere, uh, to any public school, and that is huge. I could, I could, most of you know, I could talk about anything for two hours, but I could definitely talk about the importance of school choice, public school choice for two hours. Uh, right with that was, uh, another one that I sponsored, and Representative Cozart was the House sponsor, uh, six-eighty-one, that allowed Johnny Key to be the education commissioner. I know that I took no more abuse on anything. Uh, in fact, no more abuse on everything put together than that bill. It was the right thing to do, uh, and, uh, we are thrilled to have Johnny Key in that position, as you will be. Uh, the House Bill thirteen-seven was not my bill or Representative Cozart's bill. It was Representative Murdoch's bill. Uh, but it almost got killed on the Senate end. I was able to save it, uh, the last minute, me and, uh, Senator Hendren and myself, and get it back down. Representative Cozart had to work hard to get it back through. Uh, but this bill is huge as we go forward. We've taken over Little Rock schools. I'll be glad to discuss the details at some point, but huge bill. SB three-sixty-six, uh, was a bill from Sean Cook, Superintendent Lakeside. We just came back from a bill signing, uh, over there. Allows teachers to teach. Uh, allows them to teach, uh, an extra class or extra students for more money, uh, rather than driving a bus like my dad did. They can actually do what they were hired to do and what they love to do, uh, and it can help the school out, too. Uh, school consolidation, uh, was, uh, Representative Cozart may have already mentioned that, but he, he ran that bill, and I was the Senate sponsor. Uh, you are no longer required in Arkansas to close a school that's below three-fifty if they're meeting all other standards. And it's time we realize that there are rural places in the state, that it makes no sense, that no matter how few kids are hard to drive them two hours to another school, especially if it's like Weiner, where they were one of the top ten schools in the state and you got closed down. Uh, the amendment for four-year terms is on the ballot for, uh, uh, county officials, uh, everybody but court and court. I was gonna run a similar amendment, and Senator Keying wanted to run that, and I let him. I wouldn't include you at court and court. Uh, I don't know how it'll turn out on the ballot in sixteen, but it's a, uh, I saw the courts have it once elected to the court and court, and realized that you spend all your time running. And, uh, that you really don't get your bang for your buck when your officials, as soon as they get elected, within, within about four months, have to turn around, right, Sheriff? And have to start making up your mind and start raising money for the next time. Uh, Senate Bill three-twenty-five, also on, uh, education. This one came from, uh, superintendents at Bismarck and Washtot. Uh, Lake Hamilton also had a problem with this. Uh, schools around the state, just another common sense bill. Uh, uh, no longer does a school get home probation when they have offered all the subjects they're supposed to offer, and no one took them. Uh, this was really a problem for small schools, that they would offer everything they're supposed to offer, and that they had, had to actually try to talk kids into taking courses they shouldn't take in order to keep from being put on probation. Big schools like Lake Hamilton ran across this, when they would have kids, when all their kids in calculus would want to take AP calculus, they would get deemed for not offering calculus, uh, for offering AP calculus. So another common sense bill that we were able to get through. Uh, SB three-twelve on private option, uh, that's really important because for all those who thought we could just end it anytime we wanted to, that's one of the few that got out of committee and that just said we would, we would stop enrollment, uh, at the end of fifteen, that we, no, we wouldn't stop enrollment. I didn't run that bill. We was asked, we would tell DHS to ask the feds for a waiver where we could stop enrollment. Uh, and we got thirteen votes on the Senate floor. That's how many votes we really got for about anything. And that's when people said, well, you shouldn't have voted to end it in sixteen. Well, then we wouldn't have. And I, I, that was really some. have voted to end it in 16. Well, then we wouldn't have. And I, that was really some of my biggest heartburn was when we got criticized for voting to end it in 16. And people said, well, it's gonna end in 16 anyway. Well, I'm gonna pull up one of my heroes, Ronald Reagan. The closest thing to eternity on this side of heaven is a government program. Whatever the task force decides and whatever happens going forward, we did get the language in that bill that stops that program in December 31st, 16. And if you'd have brought me one that would have ended it in three months, I'd have done that too. But anyway, I was glad I got that bill ran just so people would see. 178 would have just ended it, period. That wouldn't even got out of committee. SB 404, we talked about, 218. Very important for all the people who hate Common Core, and that may be a lot of people in this room. We, what the biggest complaint about PARC testing was data mining, or data mining, whichever way you pronounce the word. 218 provided complete privacy for K through 12. It was a bill we copied from Florida and has been run in several other states. I want you to know, we ended up tabling it at the end of the session. I had one person kept with me on that bill. It sat out there for weeks. So I determined personally that data mining was not as important as everybody had said that it was. But it's amazing sometimes when you take a word off of something like PARC, how suddenly it loses importance all of a sudden. We've got to take emotion out of our decisions and make the right decisions. Couple of things, Doug's looking like I've probably overrun my time. Things that didn't...
You did it correct.
Things that didn't make news. Some of you may remember me complaining two years ago about the Class 99 employees. That's our highest paid employees, most of them 100,000 and up, getting a 9% raise when we authorized a 2% COLA for everyone else. Didn't make any news. I didn't get it fixed in the fiscal session. As long as I'm there, it's fixed. We still don't have a bill to fix it, but we finally got it. Representative Cozart in special language that they, that if, and what was happening is whether the COLA went through or not, their salaries were being bumped, which they didn't get then. But then, and it didn't happen to any rank and file employees, only that favored few. And then later, when a COLA, three years later would go through, they had bumped their salaries to the maximum. And so anyway, you would think that that could be something, it'd be easy to stop. It wasn't, but we did get it stopped. Thanks to a constituent that contacted me through Facebook, no one knew that Quiz Bowl, Destination Imagination, and Odyssey of the Mind, $300,000, not a lot of money in the state budget, but that had been taken out of the budget. And I was able to get up early one morning. Didn't like getting up early, but I got over there and we got the $300,000 put back in the budget for Quiz Bowl, Destination Imagination, Odyssey of the Mind. 847, Representative Cozart helped me. After they told me I couldn't run it again, we ran it two more times, House Education. This was a bill we should have done. It's right of access for charter schools. Charter schools are public schools, because that's another one of those things that a lot of emotion flies around out there. A charter school is a, is a, is a public school. And charter, charter schools are operating on 60% of what public schools, traditional public schools operate on. They are not costing you tax money. They are saving you tax money. When you're in an education and rich environment like we have in Garland County, sometimes people don't see the need. But we didn't have charter schools in Eastern, in the Delta, there would be no choice. And one of the best examples is Kipp in Helen West Halem, who's number two school in the state according to the Washington Post. But they have, we have buildings in this state, school buildings, that taxpayers have paid for that are falling down. They shouldn't, a lot of them have just been looked out of. And the reason they fall down, and Representative Cozart, it's a construction like me, he'll back me up on this. You leave a building empty, it will fall down. And it will fall down quicker than you can imagine if it will fall down. And we would rather, we would rather Representative Walker and some others would rather they fell down than we let kids in this state go to school with them. And I...
That was our opposition.
And we, we will not fail next time. You send us back. We will not fail. We will get this done as we should get it done. But that was one of, one of my failures that hurt the most because we were really, we were really about one vote away from getting it through House Education. 1023 has to do with DHS and taking kids from families. We can discuss that for a long time. We will be dealing with that. We've already mentioned RIFRA. That came down to Representative Ballinger came down to the Senate and personally told me that he was the sponsor. And he came down and when we were looking at, because there was a fit thrown behind the scenes in the House. And there was, when I say a fit, not by one or two, by bunches of Republicans when they came back and the governor, who I love, and who did a great job around the session. He messed up on this issue. And I just always tell it like it is. And, and came back and we got to come up with a new bill and some of us just kind of flat out refused. But they worked on it all day and into the night and Representative Ballinger came down and said, this is a good bill. And he was the sponsor. He said, I'm happy with it. Senator Hester, who was the Senate sponsor, said, I'm happy with it. Jerry Cox said he was happy with it. And so that's why we passed those. And again, you asked me what the difference are between the two? I don't know. I know that the sponsor is happy with it. And the difference, I think Jerry Cox said, is we have a Rolls-Royce in the other bill and now we have Cadillac. So, it's still a pretty good bill. The, I'll mention one more thing because I'm sure I've gone over my time here. And again, I was just running through the bills. SB, minimum teacher salaries. There's gonna be a lot of controversy on both sides of this. And there won't be any that you'll see. It won't be in the newspaper or anywhere, but it will be on education. Last time we had raised minimum teacher salaries was 2008. And I did some, and the teachers are constantly coming to us. Keep in mind, when I say the teachers, my dad was a teacher. My mother-in-law's a retired public school teacher. And the teachers, from the time I got in the Senate, would come to us and say, you know, we never, you know, we don't get raises. We don't get any more money. And it took me into adequacy. It took me two years to figure out. It wasn't our fault. That we are, we have raised, we have given a cost of living adjustment to the schools through what we call adequacy of 2% a year since 2008 up through last year. And if you take, when we raised the minimum salary at that time, if you had raised the minimum and the salary structure for the amount of money that we had given for salaries for those past seven years, the minimum teacher salary would have went from 29,000 to 34.6. So, but everybody screams, we want local control. And they say, we want you, you know, we give the 2% for salaries. We give the 2% for transportation. We give the 2% for textbooks. But then the schools can decide how it's spent. And the way they didn't decide to spend it was teacher salaries. And, and I'm not one even to want to tell them how to do it, but I did get tired of getting chewed out. And so, you know, the superintendents, and I ran a lot of bills for superintendents, came back and said, oh, you can't do that. But we raised the minimum to 31, or around 31.
It's $858 a year for two years.
And it'll come up to 31 in two years. And I think that's a good thing. That's not nearly the 34.5 that we provided in funding for teacher salaries. But, but it is a step in that direction. So some people won't be happy because we raised teacher salaries and teachers won't be happy because we didn't raise them enough. And people won't be happy because we took away local control and other people, you know, so. But that's why we ran for the job. We were ready to make those tough decisions. And thank you for having us tonight. And I will sit down and let y'all go to the next part of the meeting.
Let's go ahead and open up for questions. And I want to ask the first question, if you don't mind. And Alan, I'll just ask this abuse. I'm sure you'd have to be on top of that list there. SB 202, that is the bill that was restricting cities and counties from creating interstate Congress in the Vomit Act. Are you familiar with that, with Fayetteville?
With Ballingers.
Yeah, that's Ballingers. I just wonder how ironclad that's gonna be. Is it something that's gonna be manipulated later on where, you know, cities and counties can go ahead and override that or?
I don't remember anything.
I think the cities can, I think the cities can make their own, a lot of them got ahead of that law and set in some laws in their own cities that will take care of it and hold it on. But I'm not sure how, it was, it was directed for that.
And I think that Representative Cozart is right is that it's to prevent that situation from happening. But some of the cities did see it coming down the pipe and they, they met and they got it on their books as well, ahead of the state law. So, I think that's probably where I'm at.
All right. We'll look up the floor for discussion and comments. I know we have several. Go ahead, Susan, I'll get you first.
Whoever. But in the Common Core, the money that's put into, because we're receiving it, because we're using it, is any of that allotted for, and the reason I asked is because I volunteered at one of the schools here in town. And I was in class with that while the teacher was trying to teach the math. And she had to redo it three times to get it right. And it's how, how can the teachers teach if they're not, if they don't know it? I'm like, I just did, I was, I was working with a child and I kept listening and I wanted to go.
I had a shell bill on that that we didn't have time to deal with or put, worry. First of all, I, I think if we've heard about anything other than data mining, it's elementary math. First of all, one of the most important things I think that was done was the governor creating the task force on Common Core. And with Tim Griffin at the head of that, Lieutenant Governor Tim Griffin, I look for good things to happen. That being said, this, as has been pointed out to me numerous times, this elementary math preceded Common Core. And it, it, Common Core has been blamed for a lot of things. And I'm, and it isn't Common Core. I'm not gonna tell you that it's not. It's definitely one of the things that, that needs to be looked at, period. And...
Well, if it preceded that, then how long did they teach you and, and why are they not receiving instruction on? This was, she's a fantastic teacher. I mean, fantastic, but literally three times over. Now, I could look up, because I would memorize the addition subtraction. I could look up and I'd be answered immediately, but...
But you can't do it that way.
No. I mean, it blew my mind. I had to stand there and look at it.
Any of y'all remember, any of y'all remember new math from the late 60s?
Yeah.
You know, probably a similar disaster, but it really did precede Common Core. And it's one of the things that's getting blamed up. You know, it's getting, Common Core's getting the catch-all. It probably needs to be dealt with. Hopefully with the new Education Commissioner and with the new governor, some of these things will, again, we can only, sometimes a bad solution's better than no solution. And what we have to be careful of is legislators is coming in and saying, here's what you're going to teach. Because sometimes that sounds really good when you put it down on paper and then, then the ever-school system in the state is limited by what we said. And it may, you know, it may have been something that should have taken months to put together rather than, than a day or two. But it, the real answer is I, it appears that elementary math is a problem. That needs to be dealt with, whatever it's called, that it needs to be dealt with. And I believe that this task force will get to the bottom of that. I, I truly do. And I encourage you to be there. I think they will hear about that every place they go. And you have a Lieutenant Governor who is a little fireball. And I cannot think of anybody better that could be heading that up than him.
Also with Common Core, if you've heard a whole lot about it, you build a curriculum. It doesn't come in a textbook. You have to build that curriculum. So if that teacher's not a curriculum builder, they need help. And there's people out there that can help them to help you build that curriculum because it's already happened in other places. Some of the teachers are building it and they're sharing it. And so that's, that's what a lot of people just don't get into that mood of asking for it until it's too late. And a lot of times they're behind. So, that's, that's what they have about Common Core that a lot of them don't understand is that you just have to build. You don't just take a textbook going out in front of them. You've got to build a curriculum and have it ready everybody.
Whatever it is, I mean, you know, the history, you read and you know the word, you know, things like that. But stuff like math, you stand in front of the child and kind of teach them. And they're having to see you go through the wrong processes. Their brains are not processing all of the different, so, you know, something like that. And honestly, it's like the teachers need to mandatorily, whatever they're being made to teach, be taught.
And again, they're, and that's one of the things, there not being a curriculum, and I know that everybody thinks that there is. The Old School, Poland, in between, Twentys yrin in Malbert, that's about 500 kids. We honored them at the State Senate this past session. They had the Teacher of the Year in Arkansas this year. They also, their sixth graders were number one in literacy and number two in math in the whole state. They implemented Common Core. Now, I'm not giving Common Core credit for this at all, but they implemented Common Core about three years ago and have had almost no complaints. But what they did differently maybe than some is they brought all the teachers in. And they, and he said, and the superintendent told me, we, he said, we don't, we use whatever curriculum we want to use. And we teach whatever methods we want to use. They're not receiving because, and what he told me is this problem that everybody's having that's being blamed on Common Core, they're not doing it. And he said, it's not Common Core. I'm just, I know everybody else is saying it is. And so...
It's more the implementation of it than it is the actual...
Yes. And again, and I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just saying that, that in that particular case, it may not actually be what we're blaming it on.
Let me get in the mic and I'll get over here.
Well, when I've heard about the committee, that they're biased for Common Core, and if you've got a, a committee that it's really for something, you're not going to look any other direction. And as far as math, I was in education. And the last six years I did remediation, but I, I was put into the classroom. I can give an example. The teacher was having trouble getting something across with the children. And I looked at it. And of course, in math, there's a couple of ways you can skin a cat. You don't have to do it only one way. And she kept going over and over it. And the kids were just confused. And I saw a different way to do it to show the children. But when it's on the test, I said, you can do it this way, but you're gonna have to show it the way she's showing it to you because that's probably the way it's gonna be presented. And the kids go, you know, we really like, Ms. Eccles, she can show us a different way to do something. We got the same results, just a different method. And this is the problem I saw before I left. They were showing children a method of division completely different than what was standard math taught. Then they'd go somewhere else and another teacher would teach it, maybe standards. But it wasn't consistent. And, and it's because the teachers aren't consistent. You can't be. We're all individual. We're all going to present it according to, and like he said, they're coming up with their own program. Right. As long as everyone's on board, you know. And, and this is some of the problems that's always been in education.
And with students too, when they're in one school and they're going to learning a certain method and then they transfer to another school, if that other school is not teaching the way that they've been learning, that child could wind up behind simply because the school is not teaching the way that they were learning.
Yeah, I believe this is an issue that's gonna be debated for a while yet. And we'll leave that with the legislators. And if you want to get with them afterwards and lay the strategy out for them, I think it'd be a good idea for you to get one-on-one with them and talk about it. We did want to talk about some other issues though that we had covered.
What about the subsidies? What, I have not heard anything about health and subsidies. How are they being handled? Did y'all go through any kind of?
Do you know what bill that was?
No.
What subsidies?
Kind of subsidy.
What, teacher subsidies for the health insurance, the other people's health insurance with subsidies? Was that presented?
There's, there's no, teachers' insurance, that task force funded by Senator Hendren. And now Representative, were you already on it?
I was on it last year.
Representative Cozart's been on it. Representative Rushing's on it now, had done a tremendous job. The savings has been in the tens of millions.
It's come out more.
I heard that it was. I heard that.
There's been no subsidies though. It's been, it's just been savings. It's just been, it's been fixing what was wrong. And as far as any other subsidies, I'm not, not familiar with any.
Well, their insurance is being subsidized by the state.
And the only thing, Ms. Eccles, that I can think that you might be talking about was October, a year and a half ago, when we had the special session, we did put 36 million in at that time, one-time money.
One time, okay.
But, but no, there's no, no more. It's completely being paid for as insurance should be. About participants, it's being fixed to where it's working. I mean, it's got a long ways to go, but we're tens of millions of dollars ahead of where we were a year and a half.
I heard, I heard something.
I think it's like 12 billion on the teacher's side right now, in the plus at 33 in the, in the state.
Well, that's because they're having to put out more out of their pocket than ever. It's gone on the... It's gone on, on the insurance side, that they, they have to put out more on, on their copay and deductibles and...
But we all are, I mean, that doesn't affect at all the state.
Is that the reason?
Compared to where it was, it would have actually drastically reduced what they, what they had to pay out of pocket, it would have, where we were a year and a half ago, it stemmed several hundred dollars if they're on the, what used to be called the gold out of pocket.
That lives very well into pensions, and entire industries in America have been run by pensions, governments are now being run by pensions across the country, and it's my understanding that the legislature doesn't give local entities like cities and counties the ability to have defined benefit, defined contribution plans, they only give them the defined benefit plans they're available to have. Can y'all comment on that?
I was on the retirement committee two years ago.
Yeah, he dealt with that, I did.
And I would say the chances of going to a defined contribution versus a defined benefit, as we have done in much of private enterprise across the United States, has about the same chances of a snowball and hell. The, having served on that committee, it is retired teachers, retired state policemen, retired state employees, and now, there was a few of us who weren't, I was asked to serve on it because my mother-in-law was a retired teacher, so they thought I would, you know, and I was just there to do the right thing, but, but here's what I learned while being on that committee, and it's being run very well, but there is, I don't see ever a point when you will have on that committee, people who support defined contribution versus defined benefit, it's a completely different mentality, but the real problem that we have, that I learned on that committee, is in government, and you can't grill the most, you might be able to see my foot, and you don't have to see it to know what I'm saying, I'll use another foot, since it's the one I use on the accelerator, is what I learned in government, is you can always push the accelerator down, you can never pull it back up. Now, never is a big word, and I found there are cases where you can, but for instance, in retirement, when things were looming in the nineties, we were actually doing a real good job on retirement already, but we said, hey, we got more money, and so we gave more money, but according to the courts, and this makes sense, according to the courts, once you've given people more money, you can't back up, because, and think about it, if it were you, if you take the job with the state, okay, and you're saying, here's what your retirement benefits are, you're going to scream, and 10 years later, they come back and say, oh, no, we decided not to do that anymore. And so, so once you've given more, you can't take it away. So we are, we, compared to most states, we're in financially good shape, we're not as good as I'd like to be, we're better than, we were about 80% contribution level, or solvent, which is supposed to be good, I think 100% is good, but in the industry, 80% is considered to be good, but compared to most places, we're, we're in very good shape, but it's not someplace where I expect to see reform, meaningful re, reform anytime soon, I'm just, you would have to have rules that said that, that people who were affected by it couldn't serve on it, and I don't see ever having the numbers within the legislature to make that kind of vote, so...
Well, I'm not doing a transition, same little grandfather, like you said, that people are coming on board as employees of future, it'll be a defined contribution plan. Been in private business for 40 years, not managed pension plans for time, and for all the things, all the companies that are working for transitioned out of the file because they're not sustainable, they cost too much in favor of defined contributions. As a citizen, I have a hard time understanding why my tax dollars have to support a more lucrative benefit system than what I give as a individual working for private business. And I just have a hard time accepting that, we make hard decisions every day, we have to do different things to have benefits or whatever else in order to survive in business, and government just keeps going, and I, I have a hard time with that exception.
I, I don't, I don't disagree, and I, I certainly, running a private business, I feel the same way, I just tell, as I have said, in this case, you just need 11 votes on retirement, but what I tell people, when they say you ought to be able to, is anything that you can get five votes on a senate committee, and 18 votes on the senate floor, and 11 votes on a house committee, and 51 votes on the house floor, and the governor has signed it, you can do it, the problem is those five steps, and if you can, if you can find a way to, to do those things, and we're making great reform, we, I mean, we've got prison reform, we've got tax cuts, we're dealing with Medicaid, and I think you're going to see some massive, good things done, and I could stand up here and tell you, I'm going to go fight to, to fix retirement, I'm going to fight to fix education, I don't think, you don't have anywhere close to the votes right now to change the retirement mentality.
If the legislature wanted to refer that out to the voters, could they do it, or would the retirement committee also have a veto against that?
I don't know what all, what all kind of acts we can refer, other than amendments, but if that were possible, again, it takes, it takes a majority, first, it would have to get out of state agencies, that's where an act like that would come from, which this last session was impossible, and then, once you get out of state agencies on both sides, then you have to get it through the senate floor and the house floor, so are they, is it theoretically possible? Yes. Is it, is it something that's probably going to happen? It's not something I'd spend a lot of my political capital on right now, there's other things that we can really make some headway on.
So the voters could, could refer it to the voters?
There you go, the only way to go, if, if that's really important to you, is a, is a voter initiative, is that you can get out there, get the petitions, and get it on the ballot.
I think that the one thing that was brought up to me, and I go back to the business mentality, because that's the role I came from, was business, business world, I know, I've had a little bit of education experience, and I've done that, and so I've been a part of these different retirement plans, but one of the biggest statements that was made to me is it took us 140 years to get this, into this mess that we're in right now, and we got to bite it off, one little bite at a time, to try to figure out how to fix it. And so, the best thing we can do is just keep biting, and biting, and biting, and having meetings like this, and hearing y'all's input is what we need to hear, and I met with a group of business people, had the same type of concerns, why are we not running the government like a business, and I can say that from my conversations with the governor, and from all of the staff, and from the legislators up there, we are moving closer, one bite at a time, of trying to run the government as a business, and the way it should be ran, and I said, I think that both of y'all would agree with that, but it's going to take us time, and we've got to keep that majority up there in order to keep moving forward, because as soon as we just get half the apple eaten, then we're not going to be able to do anything if we get the majority jerked out 100.
You can really see this, you can really see this in the state treasury right now, what Dennis has done in the state treasury, because in, in the first three months, we would have, and this is a press release, so I can talk about this, it's something that, I've worked with the treasury since 2004, so I've gone through all of the treasures, four treasurers since then, we made $248 a day, about $3,000 a month in interest, prior to this term, and the press release, and you can go read it out on the website, we have earned $419,000 in interest, so $413,000 more than we would have with the previous treasurers, in these first few months. Because of that, DFNA opened the flood base, and we're about to start trading a whole lot more, and so we'll be able to diversify what we're trading, and these numbers are going to skyrocket. That's operating like a business, instead of like a government, so if you look at what they're saying, there's a lot of this stuff that's happening under the covers, a lot of the stuff that we're not allowed to even talk about, because it's still private, some of the press releases are starting to come out, you're going to start seeing changes for a quick one.
Thank you for your patience, Mike.
Sure, sure. I wanted to hear about what's going on regarding DHS and the removal of children from the home, and also specifically, and I don't know much at all about this, I heard about it last minute, and may not have facts right or whatever, but Senate Bill 810, supposedly it may have something to do that may, and this may be wrong, but it may affect homeschoolers in, are you saying no?
We're talking about more.
Okay, so I came in late, so...
It doesn't affect homeschoolers.
Bruce, I looked it up back here, Jerry Cox's website, Family Council's website, has an article on there that's open up there right now, expressing homeschoolers' concerns about that, the governor's office is taking a lot of calls, and they're looking at, looking at that issue.
They do have concerns about it.
And it does, and, and homeschoolers are already exempt from that.
I'm just saying, you don't, this was a bill about teachers, it gave teachers the right to make their call.
Teachers is not, I don't think where teachers is in the bill anywhere.
It doesn't.
Okay, so anybody can make their call.
Anybody can make their call, it just took it where they can, they could not make a call.
Okay, okay, let me, let me say this, and you may not be aware of this, or you may be aware of this, Bruce, there's, it got so bad with homeschoolers, either extended family members even, or neighbors, or whoever, who were against homeschooling, or thought it was bad, or didn't like it, that children were in the yard during school hours, instead of in with a textbook, that people were reporting homeschoolers so much, that the Homeschool Legal Defense Association has had to step in, and I can't tell you how many cases they've intervened in because of calls of people complaining, and DHS getting involved over, you know, this type thing, it's just...
As I said earlier, this was not a DHS-type bill, just for DHS to do this, this came from the, the judges, because they see so many cases that come before them, of issues with, now, I probably won't speak on it, but this did not change any label homeschoolers as to what the neighbors could do, all this, all this did was make it legal for a teacher to make that call.
Or anyone else, or anyone else.
Everybody else could have done it, a teacher could not do it, a teacher that taught your kid in that classroom every day could not call DHS about that child.
Well, Jerry Cox's article here suggests that the governor may include looking at that bill in the, in the next special section, session that may be called.
Okay, well, that's the only change, that was, it just...
Because of those concerns.
But I mean, it doesn't affect homeschoolers any different than it already did, that bill did not affect them.
Okay, I haven't seen that bill or anything.
On the ballot, he probably knows more about it.
Well, all, all I would say on this one was, this is, you know, shutting the door after the, after the horses are out, warren door, the horses out, all of us, I know, especially myself, and I imagine these two too, are in very close contact with Jerry Cox, all the time, that this bill passed the senate 33 to nothing, without a single call, without a single email, that there might be some unintended consequences. If worst-case scenario, there are some unintended consequences, please keep in mind, that nobody said anything. It then went through, went to the house, went through the committee, okay, which took at least another week, if not two weeks, and two days after it passed, I look on Facebook, and there's all these horrible things that might happen, and I said, wow, somebody had said something before, so maybe, maybe there are, there could be some unintended consequences, I agree with Representative Cozart, it doesn't, it really doesn't allow anything that somebody couldn't have already done, but can somebody call, before this bill and after this bill, can somebody call about homeschoolers and report educational neglect? Yes, they can. Can, if you ever get in DHS's sights, is that a horrible thing? If you're a good parent, it is. So might there be a reason for concern? There may be, but again, no one, I wasn't looking for it, I mean, you have to look at the scope of bills that we look at on a daily basis, Jerry Cox and Family Council didn't take position, didn't say anything, the Homeschool Association, whatever it's called, never said a word, never said anything, until the bill was passed, and so whether the governor wants to sign it or not, or whether he's already signed it, whether it needs to be looked at, is an issue, but it was not an issue that we could look at, because we didn't know it was an issue.
It was brought to me, to talk to me about, from Judge Robin Wood, very good Christian lady, Supreme Court justice, she is a great lady, and I trust her very much, so, she comes to our prayer conference when she can, that's how much I trust her, but she brought that to me and said, it's very needed, that the teachers that teach these kids need to be able to make that call, and that's basically all that bill did. Now, anything else was already voted.
As far as not seeing the bill and not making the phone calls, you know, I know what you guys face on a regular basis, as laypeople, when we pull up these bills, it takes me three days to figure out what I just read, you know, and it's crazy.
Another great thing that this legislative session, if you notice, a Republican-controlled legislature, they have about 2,000 bills versus what they would normally do at 3,000, and if you look at the bills, most of them are very short, roughly three pages on average, there are some big ones, but a lot of them are small, this one is a page and a half, and if you've ever read the bills, you know that the first half of a page is, is all in the title, there are only two paragraphs in this that have changed, and it's new language, so I read it here just a second ago, I mean, it's, it's something that can be read pretty heavily.
But a lot of times, I think what happens is, we who are watching for bills like this, a small bill slides right by you, and then next thing you know, it passes, and you say, wha, wha, what happened?
600 were filed in that last page.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we had a lot of shell bills come out, a lot of them in the run.
Okay, another question, I'm sorry, Dan, you had your hand up first, I'll get yours inside, go ahead, Dan.
Oh, my bad, pardon me. No, I, I've been for, well, the last three years now, I've been on the high horse at Bud O'Connell, and you know, there are businesses in, in the state, their tax base was set up by the legislature, and I was always so, there's nothing you can do about it, it's, now, why are they singling out one type of business with a one and a half percent on their net tax base, whereas, you know, I ran a nonprofit making a business, and I'm here for 30 years, and I had to pay six and a half percent taxes, and, and they're paying on the gross, and they're paying one and a half percent, is there any way that they can bring up a new bill and, and put O'Connell on the same taxing basis as they would any other business? You know, they're doing so much damage in this city, they ought to at least pay their share. It just, it just saddens me to, to think of somebody that makes $30 million a month, pays 1.2 million in taxes for the city and the county.
I, I will tell you, that, that fell under the old regime, that has been happening for so long, and so long, that it never got any resistance, they're big lobbyists, they have big money to fight with, so they can keep a lot of things, but I think, you know, I don't know what the governor, the governor knew, and I don't think he's had the time to address that, look at that, and it's just, it's going to be something that has to happen from the top down, and that doesn't happen to us that much, it would happen to the top down. He says that he wants to change that, and they say their, their share, that was hard working, we can make that work, but it, it's hard, because it's been there, it's like I said, one bite at a time, well, she said, one bite at a time, that's one thing that's going to take a little bit of bites at a time.
And I think in SB 745, we've also got some, that's the chicken cheese bill, and we've got some things in there that might be leaning in that direction for, you know, it's introducing some things that can be done, but it's not going to happen overnight, and you're going to have resistance every step of the way, and I guess you guys know more about that than I do, but that's got...
I have a question, and this may be easier, well, I'll ask it. In a state where casinos are illegal, in a state where casinos are illegal, now we have other states advertising their casinos in our state where it's illegal, now, does that mean, since we're seeing lots of advertisements that we haven't seen in the last few years, but in this last, even six months, there's an escalation of advertisement on TV for casinos? Now, does that mean that Colorado could come in and advertise marijuana on, on TV? Because it's legal in Colorado, it's not legal here, but could Colorado come and start advertising on our TV marijuana cookies for sale, or whatever, whatever? So where are, where is our law concerning advertising in a state for something that is illegal in that state? And does that mean that if they can, if they can advertise casinos that are legal, can we advertise anything else that would be?
I think you're probably asking a very valid, valid question, of what could Colorado do, and, and has it been, I mean, because you're right, I mean, they would not be able to, I would think, transport their product into Arkansas, however you want to say it, whether delivered by Amazon or whatever, but, and so, but for advertising, I, you know, I don't know, that's, that's probably... know, that's probably a very good question that we haven't encountered yet, and probably the other states maybe not have encountered.
Colorado, that's, they're violating the federal law, and the federal government has said that right now, they're not going to prosecute, and I guarantee you, if they started advertising their product in other states, that would be a whole different story.
And I think perhaps is the answer, that if they were not violating the federal law, then under the First Amendment, and again, it's probably an attorney general question, but under the First Amendment, they probably could absolutely advertise marijuana.
Is there a casino, talks about Little Rock, Indian ground, they're sovereign nation, they can do what they want?
I haven't heard of anything else. Southland, Oakmont, I think they were wrapped up in Arkansas.
Indians got their land, the government hadn't got anything to do with it.
They went and bought some land in order, Little Rock, and that's, that's what they're looking at right now, nothing's being done right now, but they definitely do what they want.
We might be chasing rabbits here, let's go ahead and get back on track with the, and I'm with you, a hundred percent with you, but we want to talk about the legislative sessions, the bills that went through, the things they had control over, and not speculate what we can and cannot do down the road, talk to them later, if you've got an idea of what they can do, but right now, we want to talk about what they have done.
And, sir?
The bill was brought up due to the Indiana deal twelve, I can't remember, they turned it into seventy, twenty-five, we all know the devil's in the details, what language was changed?
Basically, your language that was changed was citing court cases, and so, they brought it back to the federal level instead of the state level, so now, they reference the Hobby Lobby case at the federal level through this bill, whereas in the other bill, it was a little more localized and dealt with state cases, but this puts it back on the federal level, where the federal government has made these callings, like in the Hobby Lobby case and that, and that is what has been explained to me as the difference between the two.
I guess those cases could be overturned, as far as, if they were challenged, they could have been overturned, and where the, the element puts it back to the Eighth District, Federal Court, and that is true of the ultimate in Arkansas.
But doesn't state law always supersede federal law?
No.
Vice versa?
Vice versa, federal law, it's not always supposed to.
It was supposed to be the other way around.
Would we lost the civil war?
Right, it's not state law.
I was answering this question, what about, or what happened with SB seven sixty-two, and then what do we do now? SB, I'm not familiar. What happened with SB seven sixty-two?
We lost.
And what do we do now?
Well, that's a question for the citizens, the legislature did what we did to.
What is seven sixty-two? It's Colorado.
Are you down with the legislative approach to that?
Legislative session in the Thursday, while they're building more in the future, it's a special session, it'd be two years, but you can't do it in such a special session.
I know that, I, I mean, this is just, this is just what I know from, from seven sixty-two, and what has, what has happened in my life regarding seven sixty-two, Representative Kozar gave me this water rights bill, that was the, was the detour, and so, he's, that's a whole different story for us, but, but anyway, it was a good distraction for seven sixty-two for a while, until they caught on to the game. But, that being said, I know that Judge Ralph Ohm, and a couple of them have some meetings scheduled for this week, B. Albright and Ralph Ohm have a meeting scheduled to talk about what can be done, I have a meeting scheduled next week to meet with the municipal league, they are hot and heavy on this case, because I have been hot and heavy on their case, because I told them that, that we were not going to get off of their case until the campaign finishes. They, they have been very good, and they're very good right now in answering my calls and being nice, I don't know how this will all play out in the end, but right now, I got them, and I got their attention, I'm meeting with them next week at Little Rock, to discuss water issues, and to see how they can help us move forward, so it will not keep our economic development from happening in the city, because if we do not have economic development, that is one of my big goals up at the Capitol, is, you know, their education, we all have our different niches, mine is economic development, and that is what I want to see grow in Arkansas, so we can continue to make Arkansas as a home, and we can't do that without water here, and without the water police being on us all the time, and so, we need to make sure that that happens, and that's my goal, is to make sure that this gets resolved, so we can continue to grow the way that we need to grow down here.
So, good to be in, though. I got that, that person as well.
You did. But I just say that, I do think that Judge Ohm feels like that he and Brian Albright will be able to come to some compromise that we may not all be happy with, but at least it'll be more fair than wasting money.
And that was the same message that I got, was to the B. and Ralph Ohm felt like that they could work together, and they might come up with some kind of compromise, and what I've learned as a freshman up at the legislature is that's half the battle, if we can negotiate and compromise, if we can just take one bite at a time, as I said before, we might not get everything we want, but if we can start moving in that direction, then we're on the right path, and so, we want to make sure we're moving forward and not taking two steps back every time that we do, so.
For me, you know, being at the spear point, spear tip of that fight, we've done, we didn't do what I would have liked to have done, but we've done something very important, as Representative Rushing just said, we actually pressured people into moving forward, but it was about two things, because this was not, please keep in mind, I represent Hot Springs, as well as Garland County, and personalities did not matter to me, the first thing was fairness, the first simple issue was fairness, it wouldn't matter which side you were on, is once people have, once people have put in infrastructure and needed it to you, and assessed themselves for twenty or thirty years on the assumption they would have water, on an agreement they would have water, you can't come back later and say, no, you can't, unless you do it to everybody, in my mind, and I believe this should be law, once you agree to serve, once you agree to provide water, you're the water provider, and this person is not, this piece of property is not less important than this piece of property. And you can say no, you have the freedom to say no on the front end, we don't want you to put pipes in, we don't want you to give them to us, we don't want anything to do with it, but once you've done it, that's the first issue, the second, as Representative Rushing said very well, is economic development. If, if we use water for politics in this state, and, you know, whatever is good for Hot Springs is good for Garland County, and whatever's good for Garland County is good for Hot Springs, and if we're stopping, if we're stopping economic development in this county, then we're stopping for everyone, and that's insane, and, and, so I said, this is not about individuals, or about city versus county, it's just about, we have got to move forward, I hope, I will, I'm sure that the others have been asked, I've been asked if I would volunteer to come and help bring parties together, I will, and I think we will move forward, I think there's a lot of pressure, I know the municipal league does not want this law, so I believe they're gonna pressure local folks to move forward, to keep a law from being necessary, but at the same time, I will focus, if we can't do something here, I represent three other counties, and I'm gonna do everything I can to promote economic development here, but if we can't do something here that I'm on Slayne County, and I'm gonna go to Hot Springs County, and I'm gonna go work, because we've gotta bring economic development to, and it's, you know, just, being a Garland County resident, it tears me up, that we would be the ones not moving forward, when I see what's happening in Hot Springs County, and what's happening in Slayne County, but hopefully, we'll get on board and do what we need to do, I think, I think now that we've got it out in the open, really, leadership will, you know, I, I'm being, let's be optimistic, that leadership will get it done, and have a fair plan.
I think he said it right, Glenn, if we're not careful, Garland County is gonna lose economic development, I do represent Garland County and a large portion of Hot Springs County, and I had Hot Springs County, Rockport, Malburn, and Magnet Cove say, send it this way, we have all the water we need, we'll give it to you, send the businesses to us, we'll take care of them, and so, you know, they're gonna start sending that message out, if we don't stop this message here in Garland County, that we don't have water.
But, you know, I've had about, you know, as a preacher's kid, I have said, you know, you can go to the Pentecostals and tell them what's wrong with the Baptists, and you can go to the Baptists and tell them what's wrong with the Pentecostals, but God help you if you tell the Baptists what's wrong with the Baptists and the Pentecostals what's wrong with the Baptists. I got onto the signature, and I told him, in our debate, I said, you should be providing leadership, if we've got a true water shortage problem, and I'm not saying we do or we don't, I'm saying if we do, you should be providing leadership to bring us together, not putting things out there to put it, to expose the part, and I will say to you, I do not care where the water comes from, and y'all may have some really good ideas, I don't care if it comes from DeRay, I don't care if it comes from Hamilton, I don't care if it comes from Watchdog, we need water, we better all get together as a community, and get the water here, because if we truly can bring water to a development for a hundred houses, then we're not going to go anywhere, you know, if we're three or four years away from that, that's really, really bad news, I have a hard time believing that, but yet, that's what I'm being told, so, we better, you know, it's easy to be, it's easy to fight, it's easy to be negative, we better all get together and find some solutions.
Now, what's the municipal league's problem?
The municipal league was the hundred-pound, hundred-pound, the two-thousand-pound gorilla in the room until two sessions ago, they, if the municipal league said it, everybody jumped, with the current legislature, that's not true anymore, and, so.
Now, they jump and say, how do I get Representative Rushing not mad at us anymore?
Municipal league, Allen.
No, they're not Allen, that they're white.
The municipal league represents the cities, and unfortunately, every group, almost every group that represents a group, if they think that it might, any bill might infringe on their power in any way, and this might be a group that you're part of, they go crazy, and then you have legislators that instead of doing the right thing, vow to the pressure of the people going crazy, and so, I mean, we had it with ETJ, which, Representative Gates had a great bill on this time, and thankfully, their power's reduced, I mean, we need them, we do need people representing cities, they should have power, but at the same time, when you get in the way of progress, it doesn't matter whether your cities, whether your teachers, whether your team are, if, if we're acting on emotion, and what might happen rather than moving this state forward, then you could end up in a lot of bad conditions.
We're gonna have to vacate this room, so, let me just do this, if you need to talk to them, you can get outside, maybe out there in the rain or something, talk to them a bit, but I just want to say, this legislative session, especially the Garland County representatives, Democrat and Republican, have represented us well, I look at the pro-life bills, and we have a huge amount of pro-life bills that went through, and have been successful, like the religious liberty bills have gone through, and been successful, and I think a lot of it's because of leadership sitting at this table up here today, and I want to thank you personally for what you've done. I know it's only ten minutes, but I tell you, you've done a great job, the ten minutes you got, and we do have pastors in this town, Pentecostal and Baptist, that beat every Thursday morning for prayer, and we've got forty of us right now that are praying every single Thursday, we're praying for you guys, and I believe that's why things are probably going to be good. Now, here's the question, what can we do for you, besides get you re-elected? What, what do you need from us?
Let us know a little bit of how to operate the studio.
Don't wait till it's over, because by then, the decision's already made, we're prepared for this, and, and saying that, and I'll just use the religious freedoms bill as, as an example, you know, for a week, we had the other side there lining the Capitol Halls, we had no, we had no pastors there, we had, we had nobody from the side that we needed there, there to bring that message, that there are people out there supporting you, and that we are behind you for the actions that you're going to take, and we're there to have your back when you make that hard vote, and, to me, it wasn't a hard vote, but to some of them, they're seeing this crowd out in the, in the lobbies, and it was a hard vote, because of the opposition that was out there, so, to me, it was an easy vote, but.
We're working on getting buses to bring them in.
There we go, just busting in on those things, we'll take them.
If the church buses haven't came in, the crowd will just...
Yes, yes.
All right, well, let's not go ahead and be this visiting, and I'm a pastor, so we're gonna do some prayer, all right? Father, once again, we thank you for our representatives, those who spoke up on our behalf there at the Capitol Building, and we thank you, Lord, for the laws that they enacted, for the way it has protected our religious freedoms, our right to birth, our right to life, I thank you, Lord, for the way that they handled the finances, and Lord, we just pray that you continue to give them wisdom beyond their years, so that they can continue to do that what you've called them to do, I believe it's a calling, for them to be a public servant, and I pray, Father, that you just watch over them, protect their families, and Lord, that you might give them strength as well, bond them closer together, we ask it in Jesus' precious name, amen, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Father. I like that. I like this.
What was it?
They don't make it.
How you guys do it?
Probably not that I can.
I'm gonna show you.
It's the first thing I mean, I think it was.
I think it was changed.
Hello?
Hi, you just say you're dead. Tell them surgery.
Oh, that's. The kind of things I like to do.
Yep, she did.
She's like a post art.
They're ready. All right. What are you out there? Okay, call it.
Oh, one of her.
I wish I could.
Well, we got it. I have the bar. That was fun. I will say, Mark's about to die.
Every good day.
Let us take four of those. What's the phone number? Maybe it's on the church.
Seven minutes.
I guess I'm.
Yes, I am. This is the eighty twenty. I see you. I'm just gonna work yours.
Somebody's changing for you.
I understand what you're saying, this bill, all that, I see the bill we talked about.
We're not ditching one too. I thought you were. Obviously, the rats will be all around. I believe. Well, yeah, I was. I'm probably. I'm probably. I'm very personal. I mean, I, I like. I don't think it's like any worse. I'm here. I'm not saying I'm. Good man, Dan.
So that's the end of the time, it's one target. I don't know why. That's a Mary. Thank you. You keep going.
Keep that, keep going. You have to do it. Everybody, you know, so actually, you care about, you listen to kids. Kids are really in the care. I don't know, my kids aren't.
Now, no, not really. But eventually, I mean, for me, I forgot. Eventually, everything I say.
What I don't like about it is if he's not handling all the money, he don't know what he's.
I don't know why they're arguing over it because. If you need, so what everyone is saying is, it's, it's. I wanna verify. I don't, I don't stand tall. Every time. I thought, no. I would. I would. I don't know. Over, I never know what I'm gonna say.
She's not, she's not more than possible. Or an Alex. So they do like. I don't know.
We got it.
You know what?
We're gonna try, we're trying to go there. He's taking a lot of his elements. It was, it's, we're going to have. Yeah, tell me. Thank you.
I was, I was. That was pretty good for that. Personally, I walked in there, which I would not buy, which is pretty good. We can hear. What's the question? Yeah, it's tough.
Hi, guys. Hi, guys. So go make your. I care.
People, I would say they might not have been a question for this. Yeah, I would. Yeah, she got it. I know. Yeah, she got it. The ground with.
Go there, make that in the office.
You never will go to meetings.
Well, we didn't see her as far as. Really. And everybody just saying, right, about, everyone gets that. Excellent.